Okay, it is four o'clock. We will call the July 27th Salina City Commission meeting to order. I would ask staff for confirmation that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we will have roll call.
Mayor Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Franz.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Okay. With that, I would ask all that are able to please stand for the pleasure of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, which is saying, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will move to awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, a proclamation honoring the life and legacy of John R. Lewis. Sandy Beverley will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon. Whereas each and every one of us involved in the constant battle for civil rights and justice for all owes a huge debt of gratitude to the late John Lewis. Yes, even here in Salina, Kansas, we are in debt for the life of this humble man. Whereas he was often called one of the most courageous persons the civil rights movement ever produced, John Lewis dedicated his life to protecting human rights, securing civil liberties, and building what he calls the beloved community in America. By 1963, Lewis was dubbed one of the big six leaders of the civil rights movement. And at the age of 23, he was an architect and a keynote speaker at the historic march on Washington in August 1963. Along with Hosea Williams, John Lewis led over 600 peaceful orderly protesters across the Edmund Pettit's Bridge in Selma, Alabama on March 7, 1965. They intended to march from Selma to Montgomery to demonstrate the need for voting rights in the state. Despite more than 40 arrests, physical attacks, and serious injuries, John Lewis remained a devoted advocate of nonviolent philosophy. John Lewis went on to become a United States Congressman, and he served as U.S. Representative of Georgia's 5th Congressional District since 1986. Lewis was a member of the influential House Budget Committee and House Ways and Means Committee, where he served on the Subcommittee on Health until his death. Congressman Lewis served as a senior chief deputy Democratic Whip and sat in a direct line of succession to the number-two Democratic leadership position in the House. John Lewis is the recipient of many numerous awards, too many to list. But they included the prestigious Martin Luther King Jr. Nonviolent Peace Prize. He received the NAACP Spengard Medal in 2002 and the NAACP Chairman's Award in 2020. And whereas if we know anything about our dear friend John Lewis, he wanted us to continue the battle for full participation in a democracy that he began long ago with other civil rights icons. Icons such as C.W. Vivian, Dr. CT Vivian, Elijah Cummings, and they were both civil rights warriors that we recently lost. On November 3, we can and must honor our beloved John Lewis, Dr. Vivian, and Elijah Cummings by casting our ballot and ensuring that our vote is counted up and down the ballot. Whereas it is recognized that John Lewis was a national treasure and a civil rights hero for the ages, we are deeply saddened by his passing but profoundly grateful for his immense contributions to justice. He used every waking moment of his 80 years to push this country toward more representative democracy and left behind a remarkable model. It is up to us to pick up his mantle and carry on, and we urge the entire community of Salina to join us. As people of all colors, ages, sex, and disability are in the streets seeking justice, we urge all that can to speak louder, stay a little longer, and to honor the best warrior for democracy that our nation has ever known. Whereas on July 17, 2020, we lost the earthly presence of John Lewis, he leaves behind a roadmap of a life lived for justice, righteousness, grace, and true forgiveness. We're challenged to live up to the words of encouragement from John Lewis himself when he said, "Do not get lost in the sea of despair. Be hopeful. Remain optimistic." Our struggle is not the struggle of a day, a week, a month, or a year. It is the struggle of a lifetime. Never ever be afraid to make some noise and get in good trouble, necessary trouble. We mourn the passing, but his work, wisdom, and sacrifice is the bridge in which our efforts are built to build the beloved community. Thank you.
And are there any special events or anything scheduled in Salina to celebrate John's life?
Not at this time.
Not at this time? Okay.
We just wanted to do this in recognition of the fact that right now the nation and the world is mourning the passing of this man.
Yes. Okay, and I have a copy of the proclamation here for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, that will lead us to Citizens Forum. This is an opportunity for anyone to come forward to just bring a topic that's not on the agenda. Please, if you come forward, please state your name and address. Is there anyone at this time that would like to come forward?
Joan Ratzle of Salina. I've mentioned this before, but I want to say it again, maybe in a little different way, that we have an ethics policy. In 2017, it was updated to include training, annual training for all board members, citizen volunteers, and so on. And as far as I'm aware, that has not occurred universally. Not every board member that has been selected to serve has received that training. And I think it's very important that everyone who serves, all of us, have a good understanding of that ethics policy, what it means, how to carry it out. I don't think that anyone who has not had that training should serve. Serving as, on a citizen board is a voluntary matter. But it seems to me that the policy says that every member shall receive that training. So I'm asking you, as a governing body, to assure that that happens. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will look into that.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Jack Will in Cairo. I live at 707 Highland. And I'm here to plant the seed of an idea. Perhaps it's always already been suggested, but my notion is to remove the Army tank, the N-60 Army tank that's in front of the Memorial Hall. At a minimum, it sends a complete wrong message about peace on earth. And it's, in my opinion, it's unsightly. And it's consistent with the notion of moving, you know, making every place a nicer place to be. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we will move to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of July 20, 2020.
Okay, we just have the one item. Do I have a...
We approve the minutes of July 20, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the minutes of the July 20, 2020 meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. That lead... As we move into administration, I'd like to ask my fellow commissioners, I think it would maybe make sense to move 7.5 to follow 7.3 and move 7.4 down. There is, if I have consensus among the commission on that.
It's aligned with me.
Since those have something to do with each other, so, okay, we will then move 7.5 to follow 7.3, so. Okay, with that, we will move into administration.
Item 7.1, second reading, ordinance number 20-11024, amending Chapter 35 of the city code by adding a new Article 14 to Chapter 35, establishing standards for the construction, maintenance, and modification of small cell wireless facilities in the public right-of-way and repealing Section 42-70 of the Salina Code.
Commissioners, this is the second reading, but there's two modifications that I want to call to your attention. They were both discussed when you heard it on first reading, and staff indicated that these modifications will be made. But the first is the definition of the small cell facility deployment. Is modified to clarify that includes other wireless support structures and not just utility poles. And then the other modification was to reduce the number of photo simulations that have to be submitted with an application from three to one. And there was a redlined version of that attached to your staff report, so you can see those two changes called out.
Do we have any questions for staff?
I guess I have one question, and maybe I wasn't paying close enough attention last week, but I didn't recall the reduction of photo simulations as being one of the things that we talked about, and it very well may have been, but it seems like... I understand that U.S. Cellular doesn't want to do three photo simulations, but I think that, given the fact that we could have these going up in neighborhoods all over, I think it would probably help all of us, including people whose neighborhoods, whose businesses may be affected, to see how that's going to impact their environment.
If you go to Section 35, 296 on page four of the ordinance, the initial edit is to require a photo simulation, but there is language that
Right.
creates the discretion for city manager, which references to city manager or to the city manager or their delegate. So staff could require additional photos if the site warranted it.
I guess my request to you would be that that we do make those requests of someone who, you know, a company that wants to install wireless equipment in our community. I mean, I understand that their business model may not be compatible with always providing tons and tons of photo simulations, but I just would hope that we do seek out that information to see what kind of impact it has.
I hadn't thought much about it, but hearing you raise the issue, I guess if I was trying to put a support structure in a iffy location, I would take the photo that would show, least show, what I would expect to be the objection. And when it said three simulations, did the city managers still have the right to request additional? I just can't remember what they...
Yeah, I think the discretionary language was added in response to limiting it to a single photo.
Because I guess, depending on the view that you get, you may or may not know if
Right.
another view would show things differently.
And if there's additional equipment, depending on what equipment they're proposing, whether it's a small attachment to a pole or as a control cabinet, I think those would factor into whether additional photos would be needed as well.
The thing I can't remember, are those locations advertised like a zoning change? This property is up for rezoning. Is there a sign that goes up on a proposed location so that the immediate neighbors would know that that site is being considered?
Let me verify. I don't believe so. And part of the discussion last week was, at the state and federal level, they've given, they've taken away quite a bit of authority in the part of cities and granted quite a bit of discretion to franchise phone companies.
If I might weigh in, my recollection of the discussion is that because of the timetables imposed by the state and FCC is we simply do not have the time to run them through the same kind of notice and preparation that we do for like a zoning reap, or zoning application, and that this is largely going to be driven by staff review. There just isn't the timeframe available. That's as I remember it.
Right, and not so much to have our usual formal hearing process, but if, you know, a little stick goes up, proposed pole, if a neighbor saw a reason that that location was not good that we might not be aware of, they'd have maybe 72 hours to call the city manager.
I guess that would be my follow-up question. I mean, how does that process going to work? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but let's say I'm U.S. Cellular, and I'm like, "I really want to put a cell tower on this residential corner." What happens next? I mean, because I understand with the time constraints that the property owners might not be notified, although I just think that sounds terrible, because I'd be certainly surprised if I saw a cabinet or something go up in my front yard and not have any, or in the right-of-way, I know, not the front yard, the right-of-way, without having any notice, so.
Right, in part, that was the reason for placement on property lines, but understandably so, that's still an issue. In all honesty, I think the support staff that could have better answered your questions were here for first reading. We had an attorney from Clarkmize and Linville involved, as well as the zoning administrator. So if you have additional questions, I'd suggest you postpone and we'll reschedule.
Because it seemed to me like we had limited ability to deal with, I mean...
And I just don't know how that plays into the notice. And it kind of depends on, you know, if I were a property owner and they slap a pole up in the middle of my front yard, I'm going to be a little put out by that. You know, if it goes on an existing pole, that's something different. And depending on where it's placed, if it's placed to the side of the property line or on a corner, maybe not so much, but it's, you know... You know, I'd like to presume that the cellular companies would like to maintain a positive public image and would not place these where they were offensive. But that's a lot of trust to extend from now until the end of time, you know.
And it's also a question of the limits of our authority, but Mr. Andrews here, he may be able to better answer your question about the notice process.
Between the, I think there's one way to describe the behavior of the cellular providers, and that is aggressive. And the other thing that they're quite effective at is lobbying the Federal Communications Commission and the legislatures of the various states. So between the legislation that has been passed by the Kansas Legislature and the FCC decisions, our local discretion is very limited, and we're basically limited to things that are objective criteria and not things that are subjective. And so the ordinance revisions were an attempt to have as much objective criteria in there as possible and to avoid the situation where anybody is placing a brand-new support structure in front of somebody's front door or an equipment box. And so the ordinance calls for new structures to be placed either at the common lot line between two dwellings or on a corner lot on the secondary, non-front yard side. And the same would go for businesses to not allow the poles to be set that would either interfere with or obstruct the visibility of their front entrance. But there is no, because of the compressed timelines that are imposed on cities to review and approve these applications, there is no, there's no opportunity for a public notice and opportunity to be heard because the timeframes for the review process don't allow for that.
Do you, as a courtesy, notify the affected property owner or the joining people?
Well, I mean, part of it is an education process for staff and for commissioners and for others to try to educate the public that the area between their sidewalk and the curb is public right-of-way. And so while it's perceived that way, technically, it's not correct that somebody has placed a pole or an equipment box in my front yard because they couldn't place it on your property, but the ordinance allows them to place it within the public right-of-way. And so there really isn't an opportunity for any notice to be provided. And one of the reasons that we were recommending repeal of the Section 4270 was because Section 4270 was in the zoning code and had all sorts of notice and process for neighboring property owners. And if we tried to utilize that... neighboring property owners, and if we tried to utilize that, that ordinance would probably be legally struck down as violating state law and the FCC regulations. So that is why we rewrote the code so that it was an administrative process, and then we tried to be as prescriptive and objective as we could in terms of where they go. And my experience is that the providers don't want to alienate people. They don't, they want to look for locations that everybody can agree to, but if I were to deny a permit based on some subjective criteria or deny it because the neighbor objected to it, I imagine that that denial would be legally challenged in some way. So we're only able to apply the objective criteria that we have put in the code.
Mr. Andrews, is there anything that in federal guidelines or state law that would prohibit us from getting three photo simulations? I mean, is there, is there a, I mean, because that to me seems a pretty objective, you know, to request, to make of a telecommunications company, so I just think that that might help reveal issues to staff so that you can make these decisions administratively, or you can take a look at it and say, wow, that's going to, that may cause some problems, I need to reach out to the property owner or whatever.
Well, their assertion to myself and to Mr. Martin was that requiring three was overkill, but we're not, we're not, there's nothing that compels us that says we can't require three. And my point to them was, in some situations, given what's around it, not receiving three might require staff to have to go out and view it ourselves and take our own photographs, which defeats the purpose. And so I was very clear with, so the compromise, which you are free to agree or disagree with, was that there would be a single one submitted, and then if we felt we need additional ones to determine what was around it or to determine compliance, that we could request that. But the original, the original draft would have required three photo simulations to be submitted from different lines of sight so that staff could get a perspective on what's around it. So that is, that is a discretionary item for you. We adjusted it at the request of the cellular providers.
Does our staff go out and look at each site before the final decision meeting?
We, I can tell you that in the case of Ideatech, which has about 30-some locations in the community, we looked at the site, but the other thing that we did, which turned, for us, turned out to be effective, was that we had a representative from Ideatech, a representative from Westar, myself and city engineer Dan Stack, and we put ourselves in a room with Google Earth and then went and looked at every, they had some 30-odd locations, and we just went using Google Earth and went through and looked at them one by one by one, because if you don't at least do that, then you're going to have to go out in the field, and sometimes there's things that a photograph doesn't show, depending on the angle it's taken. You don't want, the idea is that if we have multiple poles, that they're evenly spaced. We don't want to have a situation where someone unnecessarily puts up an additional pole that's in close proximity to another one. So if, if the photo that's submitted doesn't reveal all that, then to me, it defeats the purpose to have to go out in the field or for staff to confirm that themselves. And so that, that was my counter to their request that we not require three photo simulations.
Mr. Andrews, I presume that they are required to submit a site drawing of some sort as to where they're going to place this, along with what is surrounding it?
Yes, and the photo simulation, basically they're asked to take a photo of the setting and then superimpose either, in my experience, about a third of the Ideatech installations were new poles. And another third was put on existing Westar poles, and then another third, the existing Westar pole was not adequate, so they took a new pole and put it in the location of the existing pole, so the net result was not really noticeable. But it was, it's the one-third of cases where a new pole goes up. And the best example I can point you to is at the bend across the old channel from the Y, as you're approaching Kenwood Cove, there's a pole there with a street light on it, and that pole is an Ideatech support structure that has a street light on it, but it's owned by a cellular provider, not by Westar, not by the city.
I guess my point is if they have a site, a site drawing, and we can look at that either through our overhead photos or through Google Earth, does that suffice as a replacement or as a supplement to knowing when to require additional photos if we only require one?
Yeah, if we, if we get one and we go down through our criteria and our locational preferences, and the reviewer can't tell from that one photo, I would prefer to ask them to provide us with additional views as opposed to sending staff out to do it themselves.
Just out of curiosity, how often are the Google Earth photos redone?
I want to say our current photos, the city was driven in 2017.
The reason I'm asking is if it's like every three years, then new poles could be missed.
The good news is on our, the city's aerial photography that we just did, we just re-flew the city in the spring of 2020, and so all of the aerial photos that we have now available to us are 2020 photos, and that's extremely helpful. Because the previous ones were 2017, and some places, the 2017 photos show an empty field, and in 2020, it's got 25 houses on it, so it's helpful to get those updated.
Yeah, I guess I would, okay with the changes made. You know, you can do what you want with three pictures also, to make them to your advantage, and I think there's certain, you know, certain times this is going to be a slam dunk for city staff, and then there's going to be other times they're going to have to either go to the appraisers mapping or Google Earth or actually go out and look at it. So it's still going to be at the discretion of staff, and they have the ability to approve with conditions or to deny the application, so.
And the, I mean, I don't, I don't think there's any doubt about it that some of the providers trying to deploy their systems have been frustrated with various local requirements or varying local requirements between communities, and so their solution has been to go to the FCC and go to state legislatures to try to remove what they perceive as barriers to implementing their, their deployment of their facilities. And so one of the reasons that we felt that we had to rewrite it was that our present ordinance is not really workable or defensible, and so we came up with this. I don't, I agree, it's not been completely balanced in my experience. I've never had a ordinance that's been so scrutinized and come back with so many comments from so many people in the wireless industry, but that's, that's one of the reasons why it's, it's taken to this point into the year, because every time Mr. Martin and I thought we had a final version, there was another comment that came in, and I can't, I can't promise that there won't be some objection to what is before you on second reading, but it has been reviewed and scrutinized by all the providers and their legal teams and their others, and we have had pre-application meetings with U.S. Cellular, and I was encouraged by what they were proposing, that there weren't, they seem to be very conscientious about impacts that their facilities were having on property owners, but I just, with the time constraints that they put, there's, having notice and public hearings, and that just did not seem to be something that was workable within the timeframes that had been put upon us.
Staff feels comfortable that you, you're adequately protected in what you are allowed to do with this?
Yeah, they're, they're still not happy with our height limitation, but we did not budge on that. Their, the cellular providers wanted to have a 50-foot height limit for new poles, and we said that we simply weren't going to support anything that tall in existing neighborhoods, and other communities have not. Some communities have adopted the 50-foot limit, but every single facility that I've reviewed, not a single one of them is over 34 feet in height, and I don't think it's justified to give them the ability to have a 50-foot pole by right, so the ordinance limits it to 35 feet and 40 feet in circumstances where there's taller poles around.
Just to be clear, our process and our discretion have been limited by state and federal mandates, so to say that staff is satisfied, we are convinced that this is compliant with the playing field that we're playing on, and we can implement it as proposed, but it has, as Mr. Andrews described, limited discretion and authority. On the basis, and I think we mentioned it when we talked about it in first reading, they've made the argument that this is essentially an essential service that needs implementation and local deviation to deter them from being able to implement, and that seems to have been persuasive at the state and federal level.
The other thing, and you, on your next week's agenda, have a request coming forward from U.S. Cellular for a master license agreement, but one of the things that we pointed out there was that Ideatech, which was the first company to come to Salina, the city commission negotiated a franchise agreement with Ideatech, and we collect franchise fees from them, but the state legislature passed a bill that prohibited cities from requiring franchise agreements with cellular providers, so that, that tool was taken away from communities as well. So there's, there's just a lot happening at the state and federal level that has constrained our abilities, what we can do locally, we can still require permits. I'm just saying that we have very little discretion that if I were to review a permit and it met most of the objective criteria, and I said, I'm going to deny it because I don't think the people living there will like it, I'm not sure that decision would So, no, I can't say that staff is completely thrilled with this because we are constrained about what we can do, but if we're going to get requests, then we have to have something objective to review them against, and we have done our best efforts, and we've reviewed what other communities have done, and almost every community's had to rewrite their, their codes to make them somewhat less restrictive and to take the public, public comment and notification aspect out of it.
Any other questions for staff? If not, is there any public comment? Okay, with that, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor Hoppick, I'm going to take a stab at this, because I'm going with option number two, approve ordinance number 20-11024 on second reading with the following amendment to Section 35-296B under photo simulations. And the wording is as follows, "For additions to existing infrastructure, the applicant shall submit a photo simulation from a reasonable line of sight location near the proposed small cell facility site. The photo simulation must be taken from the viewpoint of nearby pedestrian and vehicular traffic. For new installations of infrastructure, the applicant shall submit photo simulations from at least three reasonable line of sight locations near the proposed small cell facility site. The photo simulations must be taken from the viewpoint of nearby pedestrian and vehicular traffic. The angle of photo simulation separation must be at least 90 degrees or greater and provide a full profile depiction. For both additions to existing infrastructure and new installation of infrastructure, the city manager may request additional photo simulations from other line of sight locations if the city manager determines that additional information about the conditions in the vicinity of the proposed small cell facility site is needed in order to evaluate an application."
Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 20-11024 on second reading. I have one question for Mr. Andrews. Will this change have to be approved by the cellular, by the state or by anyone?
No.
This is just ours.
I explained to Commissioner Hodges that language there is completely discretionary for you. It's up to you to describe what is your minimum supplemental requirements. They, they were not contending that they, they thought that that violated any federal or state provision. They thought it was, it was overkill on staff's part to request three photos, and there's cases where it may not be overkill, so I'm completely comfortable with that amendment.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve ordinance number 20-11024 with amendments. We will have, with, because of the amendments, can we still do this second reading, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we will do roll call.
Mayor Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner France.
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Nay.
Okay, that passes four to one.
Ask Commissioner Hodges to share her language with the city clerk so that we can get that properly incorporated before we do publication, so.
I will. I'll give her my notes, but I may have to refer to the video. I just basically incorporated both, but thank you.
That's the reason I did not try to repeat it.
I got the gist of it, and from staff's perspective, that works perfectly well for us, but we just want to make sure that was a lot of verbiage so that we get it recorded on second reading correctly, so, thank you.
Okay, that will lead us to 7.2.
Item 7.2, authorize publication of the notice of budget hearing for the 2021 budget, which sets August 10th as the date of the public hearing on the 2021 budget and establishes the maximum limits of the 2021 budget.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Tara Sauber, Deputy Finance Director. Ms. Pack is out of the office today, so I will provide the background for this item. Kansas state statutes require that a formal public hearing on the proposed budget be held and that a public notice be published at least 10 days prior to such hearing date. The notice of budget hearing will include the date, time, and location for the hearings, as well as establish the maximum limits of the 2021 budget and the maximum amount of property tax to be levied. The 2021 proposed budget establishes the maximum mill levy at 30.697 mills. This mill levy will allocate the following amounts. General fund, $10,737,173. Bond and interest fund, $3,62,827, for a total of $13.8 million. Next steps in adopting the 2021 budget include August 10th, public hearing and first reading of ordinance to adopt the 2021 budget; August 17th, second reading of ordinance to adopt the 2021 budget; adopt position classification and salary schedule; and adopt the 2021 adopt position classification and salary schedule, and adopt the 2021 comprehensive fee schedule. August 25th, adopted budget must be submitted to the county, and later in the fall, we'll adopt the 2021 to 2025 capital improvement plan and water and wastewater rates. After publication, these amounts may not be increased, however, they can be reduced. Recommended action today is to authorize publication of the notice of budget hearing for the 2021 budget, which sets August 10th as the date for the public hearing on the 2021 budget and establishes the maximum limits of the 2021 budget. And I will stand for any questions.
Questions for staff?
I don't think I have any questions for Ms. Sauber, but I did reach out to City Manager Mike Skreg in terms of something that we had discussed last week. Commissioner France brought it up, and I'd also like to thank Commissioner France for preparing a really awesome spreadsheet. I hope it goes into the online packet that shows where Salina ranks in terms of property taxes, sales taxes, and combined taxes. But at any rate, Commissioner France had brought up an interesting idea about reducing our health insurance fund balance to $2 million, which is the target balance, since we're sitting at about $3 million now. I didn't know if we'd heard back from Charles Worth.
Not that I know. The inquiry is in, but I don't know that, and I think what really needs to happen is we need to sit down and look at kind of our history of balance month to month, our fluctuations in our claims history, and then I think we can bring you a recommendation. My intention would be that between now and renewal, we could look at what our renewal rates look like, what the percentage increases might be, and bring to you kind of a plan of annually how we can look at that balance and address it more proactively than we have in the past.
So you wouldn't anticipate that occurring before we adopt the budget and have the public hearing? Would that, that's not going to happen before that point?
Yeah, I don't know that we'll have that analysis done. The budget does include a 4%, an assumption of a 4% cost increase. That doesn't necessarily mean a 4% increase to employees, but that's, there is a placeholder in the event that rates go up, but we wouldn't, that doesn't, we have an opportunity to address the fund balance outside of the budget hearing.
Any other questions or comments for staff? Is there any comment from the public? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the commission. Mayor Hoppick.
Aye.
Move to authorize publication of the notice of budget hearing for the 2021 budget, which sets August 10th as the date for public hearing on the 2021 budget and establishes the maximum limits of the 2021 budget.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize publication of the notice of budget hearing for the 2021 budget, which sets August 10th as the date for public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five zero. That will move us to 7.3.
Item 7.3, resolution number 20-7851, declare it to be considered a qualified facility under the City of Salina Municipal Facilities Naming Guidelines with Proceeds from the Naming Obligation of Dean Evans Stadium.
Mr. Goddard.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hoppick, members of the commission. Yesterday, the Parks and Recreation Department seeks approval of Resolution 20-7851. This resolution will allow baseball enterprises the ability to sell the naming rights for the East Crawford Recreation Area to a local prominent family in return for a $650,000 investment to be used for the Dean Evans Stadium renovation project. Staff is of the opinion that this naming initiative is separate from the original request and needs to follow the naming process by letting the new proposal...